Could I just do a follow up on that?
Sure.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Also, I apologize for not being able to call you back. I want to, I mean, I want to put out there, you did call me and then I didn't get asked these questions. Like, my day got away from me. My que- and maybe this sounds ignorant, honestly, but like, does the lease not do that? Like, does the lease not just tell us who is in the house already, you know, and like, like, how is, how will this do something different from the lease, I guess?
Sure. One thing, we, we do have a lease request process, but I will say that leases are not standard in form either. So, we, this, this applies as standard that the, the, I'm careful to use the word enforcement. We don't look at ourselves as an enforcement agency. We work, try to work with constituents. We aren't, you know, to the extent possible, we are, want to work with folks. But as a government body and someone that, uh, uh, agency that needs to apply a standard, we think this can help be consistent because the lease process isn't consistent. And that's not a pejorative statement. It just is, uh, we have no governance over, we have governance over whether a unit can be rented. But we don't have governance over, you know, a lease template or anything that standardizes the lease process. That is a whole nother, uh, legal process and, uh, and in my mind, in our mind, this provides a, a standard for the city to reference, uh, in that, in that way. And it's an attestation that people have understood the ordinance. They understand the Title 20 occupancy ordinance. And they're, they're attesting to that, just like we normally would have done in the rights responsibilities. Danielle, I don't know if you have anything to add, uh, there from a legal perspective? If, if, if that's okay, Councilmember Rosenbarger, I didn't want to hand it off without checking with your president Sims.
Oh, yes. If he wishes to comment and continue, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to add one thing, uh, to the, the discussion about leases. You will encounter situations as well where there is no written lease agreement. You may have an oral lease agreement or something else like that where there is no documentation in place to base that off of. Um, and so this affidavit would also provide a starting point, uh, in the absence of a lease.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, any further questions from council? And I will remind everyone that this is on amendment three. Okay, seeing none, um, we'll go to the public for comments on amendment three of ordinance 21 dash 30. Please indicate your intent to speak publicly by using the raised hand function in Zoom and/or sending a message to, um, our meeting host, indicating your desire to speak publicly. Mr. Lucas, I see three hands. Do you see the same?
At the moment, yes, and I believe Mark Fig, uh, is first up.
Thank you. Mark Fig with Fig Property Group Kirkwood Management. And I'm speaking just to the amendment now as requested. So, um, after the last, uh, city council hearing on this ordinance, we had multiple interactions with, with, uh, John Zodi, Brent Pierce, and Daniel Dixon, along with some others in the Monroe County Apartment Association to just to voice concerns and things within the, within the proposed legislation. And they were extremely receptive and, uh, you know, we, we, you know, had a great interaction and are very pleased with that. We've always had a great relationship with A and and consider it to be very collaborative in all matters over the years and, and going through to today. So, thanks for that. So I personally support the amendments, uh, this amendment and believe it, you know, gets it, you know, closer to being workable. So I'll save my other comments for the, the master legislation. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. P. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next is Greg Alexander.
Hi, thanks. My name is Greg Alexander. Um, basically echoing what, uh, Mr. Fig just said. I had concerns about the intended consequences, but I also had concerns about the unintended consequences. You know what happens when a landlord is, is forced to grill tenants on what their relationships are? You know, is this treading on something that used to be a convenient, don't ask, don't tell? Are we going to have very awkward conversations? And I believe that this amendment does address the unintended consequences. And I respect that Housing Neighborhood listened. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Alexander. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next up is Callie Taylor.
Hello, um, I just have a question. Um, it's probably more of a legal question. So the House enrolled Act 1541, and I wonder if this is a violation of that? It says, "A unit may not regulate through an ordinance or otherwise any of the following aspects of a landlord tenant relationship with respect to privately owned real estate located in a unit unless the regulation is authorized by an act by the General Assembly." And you go down to number five, disclosures concerning the property, lease, or rights and responsibilities of the parties or involved in a landlord tenant relationship. So I just question, is this legal or is this in violation of this? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have anyone else, Mr. Lucas?
Yes, next is Andrew Gunther.
Thank you, Council, for the opportunity to speak again this evening. Um, I'm speaking this evening as a former member and vice chair of the Bloomington Board of Housing Quality Appeals. I've also worked in town for landlords and property managers for a number of years. So I'm intimately familiar with the tenant landlord relationship. Prior to this amendment, there were as many problems I had with the original legislation. I was worried that it violated the privacy rights of some tenants. Um, I was worried about handholding on to the documents, um, which then become a matter of public record. Specifically, one example I thought of was, um, I've had friends of mine who have lived in housing designated for people in recovery. And I certainly know that many people in housing, uh, for people in recovery don't want it on any public record that they live in housing for people with recover- in recovery. So that is one aspect that I had found concerning. With this amendment, uh, if I, my opinion basically boils down to if the overall legislation is to pass, it needs to pass with this amendment. Um, I don't think that the base legislation has much merit in terms of actually addressing over occupancy. And I also think, uh, at worst, it does damage to the landlord tenant relationship in Bloomington even further. I would like to say, um, additionally, that there is, uh, an aspect regarding, um, the General Assembly that has been mentioned. I will leave it to City Legal to their interpretation of that. But I would advise the council to be wary, um, of waiting into a potential lawsuit with the state again, regarding an issue of this importance simply due to legal cost, time, and that sort of thing. So, um, like I said, if, if this is to pass overall, I think it needs to pass with the amendment. Um, I yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Mr. Lucas?
Next is Victor Gutierrez.
Yeah, I just had a question, um, in, in relation to what was mentioned before about some of this information being part of the leases. I know it was stated that it's not always the case, but in, um, in the situation of, uh, uh, property owner or, property management company that does include that on their lease, would it be possible to apply for like a waiver to, not have to do the affidavit if we meet the requirements on information and our lease instead? This is just to reduce some of the paperwork if it's possible.
Thank you, Mr. Gutierrez, for your comments. Do we have anyone else, Mr. Lucas?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay, seeing none, we'll go back to council for final comments on, uh, amendment three of ordinance 21 dash 30. Councilmember Flaherty.
Thanks. I, I wanted to follow up on, uh, who the, um, members of the public's questions. First, I wonder if Mr. Dixon could speak to, um, uh, the legal footing for the ordinance and, and, uh, the city's interpretation on that vis a vis the, the recent state change in state code.
Uh, yes, thank you. I, um, there's a couple of things to address. So, uh, Senate enrolled Act 148, um, was originally passed in 2020. The governor vetoed the legislation and the veto is overridden, um, in, I believe, February of 2021. The issue about the legal footing of that, um, I think has been pretty, uh, pretty well resolved at this point. There was some general language in 148 that prohibited, uh, the city from engaging in any sort of regulation of the landlord tenant relationship. That was stripped out, um, by, I believe it was House Enrolled Act 1541, which was mentioned before. The other thing I will mention is that occupancy limits are put in place through the, uh, U D O. The U D O is a, uh, authorized by the Indiana General Assembly. Um, and so these sorts of regulations are otherwise authorized, and I think except for 148, even if that problematic language remained. So I don't have, um, significant concerns, uh, regarding the existence of 148 as it currently reads.
Okay, thank you that cover that, Councilmember Flaherty.
Uh, yes, though I had a follow up, uh, or a second question, uh, but if others did.
Okay, um, do we have any other questions from counselors? Okay, seeing none, Councilmember Flaherty, please proceed.
Uh, yes, thank you. Just also wondering about the comment from, uh, Mr. Gutierrez. I don't know if Mr. Zodi will be, or, or Mr. Dixon will be able to respond about, um, sort of easing administrative burden for, um, rental companies or landlords, uh, in terms of incorporating, um, the information as part of, as part of a lease, and, and just as aligned within lease, for instance, or does it need to be this specific form?
If I could answer that. Two things. So going back to, to SCA 148, um, I would have concerns if we started to make something like this requirement of, of, like a lease or something else like that, because that would be putting a, something involved, um, in that, that lease agreement, which I think we're prohibited from doing in 148. They, that is something that I believe landlords could do voluntarily. We do have through Title 16 already a, a variance process. And so, um, somebody who would have a basis to request a variance from this particular requirement could file a, uh, a request for a variance or appeal with the Board of Housing Quality Appeals, uh, and present their case to them and why they believe that they may not need to be, um, required to follow this ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Flaherty. Do we have any other, um, comments, questions from council? Okay, seeing none. The president will put this question to a vote by announcing the question and calling for the roll. Before we do that, I want to make sure that I am proper, Mr. Parliamentarian, Councilmember Flaherty.
Uh, yes, I believe we've, uh, considered everything we need for amendment three.
Thank you very much. Will the clerk please call the roll for amendment three of ordinance 21 dash 30?
Yes, Councilmember Sims.
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
And Scambolary?
Yes.
Thank you. Amendment three is adopted eight zero. Um, before we go any further, Councilmember Flaherty, um, what does this do with amendment four? Does that render it mute?
Um, no, I, I would like to go ahead and move that amendment if it pleases the president.
Yes, no, I thought you said that earlier. I'll just double check it. So.
I, I move, we adopt amendment four to ordinance 21 dash 30.
Second.
Thank you. Are you presenting, Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, so this amendment went out in a packet of then done today. So council members should have that, and it's of course available in our council meetings and documents, uh, page for members of the public. Uh, I'll just read the synopsis to start. It's a fairly minor change, uh, to section C of, of, um, the occupancy affidavit section. Uh, this amendment removes the requirement on property owners to complete an occupancy affidavit at least once per year. Instead, it requires owners or agents to complete such affidavits only when there is a change in the occupancy of the dwelling unit. The amendment also modifies the period during which such affidavits must be maintained. Uh, so it, in particular, uh, in the text, it strikes the, the words "not less than once per calendar year" and also, by striking that language, especially as we, we've, uh, with amendment three moved away from an annual, um, uh, cycle, uh, based in the, uh, month of September. Now it's, uh, simply a requirement that, that, um, landlords maintain, uh, the affidavit in, in their files. Uh, so this notes that if there's no change in occup- or this amendment would make it so that if there's no change in occupancy of the dwelling unit, uh, the, there would be no obligation to, um, continue to update that affidavit annually. Um, and then additionally, uh, it would make it such that, uh, only the, only the affidavit related to the current set of tenants need to, needs to be maintained on hand. So that is the, the whole of the amendment. Um, I'm happy to answer questions.
Okay, thank you. Um, we will now go to council for questions. Um, and I'll go first. Uh, first thing I'd like, if it's okay, first thing I'd like to know is what does staff, Mr. Zodi Hand Director, think about this amendment?
Um, I, uh, have not been able to review it extensively. Um, just saw it come through today. So I'm sort of thinking on the fly here. I apologize. Um, I think the, um, I want to know logistically, uh, Mr. President, how the, oh.
No, no, I was going to say, I, I'd like for you to finish, but I was wondering if Mr. Dixon had a chance to, to read it more thoroughly.
Hi, yeah, I did. Um, I have reviewed it. Um, I would though defer to Mr. Zodi.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you. Continue, Mr. Zodi.
So I think the annual, I, you know, what we were trying to strike there in that balance with the annual requirement was to make sure that the tenants knew, um, based on our discussion on June 2nd. So I will, uh, state that that's my thought there, that we were trying to make sure that there was the ongoing education process. I understand Councilmember Flaherty's, uh, idea that, you know, you only change that when you have new tenants, if I'm correct. When you have new tenants, they would have to sign a new one. Is that, may I ask, uh, Mr. President, if that's, if that's the idea that a new tenant would? I mean, if you signed it, like, if, if I was a renter and I was going to lease somewhere for three years, I would sign that, um, affidavit the first year and then not have to sign it again. It would just be maintained. And then if it were required by the inspector, then the current year is what you would require. So I guess the first piece of the council is amenable to it. I think, uh, that we would be okay with that. The second piece, I have another logistical question, I think, Councilmember Flaherty, if I may?
Uh, I could clarify. I, I think there was maybe a misunderstanding of the second part. It would just be the current, uh, affidavit on file. If you've had the same tenant for five years and they executed an affidavit at the beginning of that time period, that would be, uh, the relevant current affidavit. So it, it eliminates the need for the affidavit to have been signed within the previous year, if you have a long-term tenant, for instance. So it does, it doesn't, um, say that in this version or if this amendment passed, uh, everybody subject to this, uh, ordinance would still have to have a valid affidavit on hand or on file, maintain it, uh, in the words of the ordinance. But i- it would not have to be, have been executed within the previous year in the case of multi-year tenants.
Okay. And the second piece of the amendment, I apologize, everyone, that I, um, wasn't able to review this extensively, um, when it came out. The other view of the unit is that shall retain occupancy until the day of changing the owner of the resident shell. You know, I don't know that, to answer your question, Mr. President, I know the staff necessarily objects. I think, uh, if I can put anyone else on staff on spot here to see if they see any problems. Brent, John, uh, Daniel, and if they need a little logistics here, if I may, council. I want to make sure we talk about this, and I, sorry for the.
Yeah. Here. Sorry, Director Zodi. Everybody hear me? This is, uh, Brent Pierce. I'm the assistant director at hand. And, uh, just again, sort of, um, in, in, in thinking about this kind of in, in the moment here, we, um, you know, after engaging the, uh, landlord community, property owner community, that we, you know, sort of, you know, I, I think it came to an agreement that the, uh, the, the maintenance of the, uh, the, the records of occupancy, the affidavit, uh, by the property owner was to compromise. And then upon cycle inspection, whether that be three-year, four-year, five-year cycle, that would be the time at which the landlord would produce to hand, uh, the, 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 the annual, uh, affidavit collection that they had. And so we, we kind of came to an agreement, uh, as a, as, you know, internal hand staff, along with the Apartment Association, that that, that seemed to make, uh, the most sense. I think there was some sentiment from the council that, um, to, to Director Zodi's point, that there would be a bit of a notice education piece, uh, that, uh, tenants, you know, would, would, you know, once a year be notified that, you know, that if they were to overoccupy, they would be in violation of an ordinance. So I think that's where that, the policy, uh, came out of. But again, as opposed to the collection by hand and the annual submission, uh, the, the every three or four or five-year cycle inspection was the best time for hand inspection staff to be out in the field to review those documents. So it kind of satisfied the, the, I, you know, the policy desire for tenant notice, uh, you know, in educated sort of tenant universe, but also the, um, you know, landlords being sure that every year they were keeping up on, uh, you know, the, the occupancy management of their property. So I, I think that's, and, and again, that's not a, that's not a statement necessarily, uh, that objects to the amendment. I, I just explaining where I think hand is coming from when it comes to how we landed on that compromise after engagement with the Apartment Association and, and renters. So, uh, you know, I, I certainly don't want to speak for the department in, in a, a, uh, y- yes or no, or up or down to the amendment. I, I will just, that, that's a bit of an explanation as to where we were coming from. That it, that it wasn't necessarily an internal hand decision to arrive at. It was after pretty thorough engagement after that initial hearing with the council, with the Apartment Association. So I, I think, I think policy-wise, if, if the, if the aim of the council is to have, you know, a bit of a notice education component when it comes to tenants and landlords, that a, um, that an annual or every, you know, the time a tenant changes, collection of the affidavit makes sense. That being said, I guess I would certainly defer to council, uh, as the, the ultimate, uh, decider as to whether I take up this amendment. But I just wanted to offer an explanation as to where we're coming from when we landed on the, uh, the annual collection with the cycle inspection, um, review of the documents.
If, if I may, um, oh, I don't want to preempt, Councilmember, I was just going to sort of summarize, maybe offer a, some more clarity on a way to think through this.
Oh, yeah.
If we go back to sort of the way we approach these changes, number one, does this, if the amendment passed, if amendment four was adopted, would it still be a tool by which the landlord and the tenants are affirming that they are aware of and are complying with the ordinance? I think yes. If we are comfortable logistically with the inspector going out and saying, "I need to see your affidavit." And Councilmember Flaherty, if your concept here is that it would be the current affidavit, right? Part of the philosophy in showing the last two years was if maybe they hadn't done it yet for the year, they were supposed to do it once annually. If they went out in June and they say, "Well, I don't do those until August every year." They say, "Here's last year's," and we had some documentation, right? So that was the point of the two-year issue, and because we heard from some landlords about their systems management. Number two, does it protect the privacy of tenants? I think I don't see any change there, um, to this, that amendment four would do. Number three, are there any legal issues with it? Danielle, I'll defer to you, but you deferred back to me, so I don't necessarily see any, uh, but I will ask you that question again. So does it allow us to apply that standard of a legal document that has attestations saying people comply with the ordinance? I think the answer is yes, if I'm understanding this, but I'm telling you, this is how I think, this is how I'm thinking through it. I can't find reasons to object to it based on those three tests, if you will. So unless I'm missing something, Councilmember Flaherty, I don't think staff would be in objection to this. John Hewitt did raise his hand, if I may ask him if he has any, um, process concerns. Councilmember Sandberg, I know, and I want to preempt you, so I'll defer to you.
Go ahead, Mr. Hewitt.
John? You're muted. If you, uh.
Okay, took me a minute to get the unmute to happen. Sorry about that. Realistically speaking, changing it from yearly to not yearly won't affect how we, as inspectors, collect the data. Because as a normal course of, of doing inspections for the last number of years, when we collected tenants and owners' rights or the move-in inspection, the inventory damage list, it was always the one that was in force with the current tenants, no matter how long they'd been in place. So if they'd been there for five years, it was still the, the same document from when they signed their lease originally. Not something that had to be renewed yearly. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, John.
Thank you very much. Um, we'll go to Councilmember Sandberg, and then I believe Councilmember Rallo's next after that. Councilmember Sandberg.
Yes, thank you. And this was to, uh, Director Zodi or, um, or Mr. Pierce. In speaking with the, the landlords and the Apartment Association folks during this past week, have any of them indicated that this would be, uh, uh, you know, a, a, a burden to them, uh, to provide the affidavit, uh, on a more frequent basis? And again, something you said earlier, I appreciated, where this is not about enforcement. This is about compliance, and of course, part of compliance is that education piece. So once again, I'm just kind of inquiring about the kind of pushback you got from the landlords. Is this going to be any kind of, you know, uh, difficulty for them to do it as we've discussed in amendment three?
Um, I think the, Councilmember Sandberg, I think the amendment three, and I'll reference Mr. Fig's comment, if I may, Mark. That this is a good compromise and that they're happy that it's in this better place, right? So I will say that I don't think amendment four changes that substantively. I think in fact, it'd probably be more favorable toward this because it's not requiring the annual update anymore. It's requiring you to present to maintain it and make sure you have a current one on file. And I will say that the ordinance is specific saying any inspection, so we can't, I, I don't think we'd be comfortable saying, "Well, you only need to have it available during your cycle inspection." If we get a complaint about your property, uh, a complete inspection could be done. And so there could be an annual visit to your unit if there are problems, right? So it's not like you can just wait to do it the third year or the fourth year or the fifth year. You need to do it annually because at any point we could say, "We're coming out. We need to do an inspection thereabouts." And so I think that's sort of our, our fallback. That's as far as I'll go to characterize how I think the landlords would respond. It's Councilmember Sandberg. I'll rely on them. Uh, I know we're past public comment, but if, if, if I may, I'm wagering here, but I think they would be more favorable toward this process and consider it maybe in a better place.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Rallo.
I had a similar question, um, but I also had a second part, and that is that, uh, Mr. Zodi, I, if I hear any apprehension on your part or your staff's part, it is about, uh, an edu- the educational component of, of a reminder of the parties, uh, landlord and tenants, uh, of the, uh, occupancy policy. So that's really the, um, is that the only apprehension you have at this point?
Uh, speaking plainly, Councilmember Rallo, I, I just, uh, in the interest of being prepared, I did have a chance to look through the amendment extensively and digest it and analyze it. So there's a little bit of that in there and not apprehensive as much as I was trying to let the wheels turn as fast as they can here. If the council is okay with the education piece, I think we would be okay with that. We think it's important, but we also, our role has changed. So we know that we need to be doing additional outreach from hand toward the tenant community in Bloomington because we can no longer require that tenant rights responsibilities form. So we think that's a piece that's coming up for us anyway, affidavit or not. And so what we were trying to do is strike a balance from the discussion on June 2nd, that there does need to be that tenant education. So that was the aim and trying to keep that piece in place. So that's, as Brent said, we'll defer back to council on your feelings on that tonight. But I think my apprehension is half just, you know, trying to digest this quickly and making sure that we're being respectful of that wish of the council on June 2nd.
Yes, could, could I ask a follow up? President Sims?
Yes, Councilmember Rallo.
To the sponsor, Councilmember Flaherty, I wondered about a little bit more about your intent on this. Is it's to prevent, you know, you, you see a yearly affidavit as being redundant? Is, is that the primary motivation that you have for offering the amendment?
Redundant and an administrative burden for landlords and, and sort of a burden for tenants as well. You know, we had public comment two weeks ago as well as feedback I've gotten from both tenants and landlords that not, not everyone executes a new lease every year. Some people do multi-year leases, some somewhere on a default month to month. Amendment Four specifically doesn't aim to undermine any of the goals of the, of the legislation. It simply seems to lessen the burden on tenants and landlords both while keeping all of the key components in place. A valid affidavit would still need to be maintained. I just don't, I guess see the, I see there, I think there are, there are, it's more, more harm than good for an annual requirement for folks who are in the same living situation, same landlord, same tenants. And even, you know, again, we kind of, with this, with Amendment Three, we got off of the, of an annual submission in the month of September and now it's just open ended that you have to do this annually. So Mr. Zodi mentioned the, you know, last two years language was motivated by the idea that since there's no date required by which you must do this quote unquote annually, that they wanted to have two in there. So, I mean, does it, does it have to be within the last year as, as drafted now? What if somebody did it in August of one year and September of the next year? Technically that's annually, but they went more than a year at a time. What about January 1 of one year and December 31st of the next? I mean, it, without a, a date of a submission of a form to hand, to me, the annual, the annual nature of it doesn't make sense unless you are actually changing tenants or updating the lease. So again, responding to tenants and landlord feedback about administrative burden here.
I, I understand, so a, a good point. What, what about your, do you have any concerns about the apprehension related to the educational component? Because, you know, it, it, it may put the tenants or, or the landlord in jeopardy if they don't, if, if they don't update it, they forgot about it and the tenants, you know, it's out of mind. Does, does that affect you? Do you share any apprehension?
Not, not, not really. I think, you know, if it's the same tenants and the same landlord, they probably know, know their rights. I mean, again, the feedback from landlords has been that they generally communicate this. If they've executed a affidavit that they formerly were not, you know, required to execute. I think that, that is education enough. I think also in, in the case of, if we're, if we're thinking about and distinguishing among student and non-student renter populations, which I think to some extent we, we, is, is an element of this as it's an element of the underlying policy about three unrelated adults, no doubt. I think non-student adult renters are probably much more likely to be multi-year tenants in places and, and sort of are, are aware of, of these sorts of things and not, don't need to fill this out every year. So short answer, no. I'm, I'm, I think, of course, as the amendment sponsor, that this is a better fit for, for all.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Zodi, did you have a response?
Just, I guess to reiterate the point, I just, I, I appreciate the questions because it's given me an opportunity to think through this. I just keep going back to those three tests, right? If I got a call from a neighborhood or a neighbor or anyone saying, I'm afraid this unit's over occupied, what, what can you do about it? We do a complaint inspection, we call the landlord, they should have an updated affidavit on file for that period, period, right? So it's, they're supposed to have done it annually, they have one on file. If not, they're facing a violation. Does that, does that change the privacy? No. Does it change the process in an adverse way for property managers and landlords? I don't see that it does. Unless any legal hangups, I don't think we would be, again, I'll just, I guess I'm reiterating that we don't think we would be opposed to this, Councilmember Rallo. So my apprehension is waning on the preparedness part here as we go along. So I just, however helpful it's, it is to restate those things, I just doing those tests over and over in my head and I don't see issues here. But again.
That's.
To the council.
That's very helpful. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Have any other questions from council members of the sponsor or Mr. Zodi? Councilmember Pete Mont Smith?
Yes, thank you to Councilmember Flaherty for bringing up this issue, which is very similar to the issue we discussed with Amendment Two that passed 5/4. So I was just wondering if Councilmember Flaherty could tell us whether this is related to Amendment Two and, and how it may be different.
Sure. Yeah, good question. Amendment Two struck language about basically not needing to fill out, being able to check a box in a form that said no change in occupants and submitting that form. So it is definitely related about the idea of a situation where you have the same tenant, your, your same set of tenants year after year, not needing to go through extra work or submissions. I think the difference was with Amendment Two, that was in a form of the ordinance where there was still a form happening every year. So there's some nuance here. I think that if the form was going to be required no matter what, I think the council, a majority of the council on Amendment Two felt that, you know, requiring majority signatures, or sorry, not majority, but requiring signatures from the tenants at that time, because the form had to be submitted regardless, was, you know, an education piece or not overly burdensome. I voted no on Amendment Two, of course, but I think it is a little bit different situation now, given Amendment Three's passage, since there is not a duty to actually turn in a form every year on behalf of landlords of certain types of rental units. Rather, they just need to maintain this on, on hand. So I, I see that as, as a sort of distinction that I don't know whether it'll make a difference for, for members of this council or not, but I, I think it's relevantly different enough that this is not the exact same as, as reconsidering Amendment Two, if that's kind of what you're getting at.
Um, thank you. I, I didn't think you were repeating Amendment Two, but I just wanted to establish that the, the, the topic was similar. Thank you.
Thank you. Fellow council members, have any more questions? Councilmember Sandberg?
Other than I see that Brent Pierce has had a hand up, I think he wanted to comment a couple of questions earlier to provide some information. I wonder if he would like to do that now.
Thank you, councilors. And I, I don't want to speak out of turn, Councilor President Sims. I just had a thought as we're thinking through this. As we engaged the apartment association in, in sort of the, in the spirit of, of partnership with the landlord community, I, I guess I would be curious if there, if, you know, in the event that's, that a landlord had a five year cycle or even a three year cycle, what their, their thoughts are on ma, on maintaining a records. You know, say you had a long-term tenant that was three, four, or five years and an issue arose, would, would you feel put on the spot if you didn't have the piece of paper from five years ago that you collected from those tenants who had been with you for a longer term period? So I know that a lot of leases are year to year, but I'm just thinking through the scenario where it may be a, a little bit of a, not an administrative burden, but just the poss, the possibility of a, a, a longer term hold, longer term hold on records being problematic for, for landlords.
Thank you. Councilmember Sandberg, did you have any other questions? I wanted to recognize Mr. Pierce, Brent, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. Any further questions from council? Going from screen, screens, and if I have any hands. Saying now that we will go to the public for any public comment on Amendment Four of Ordinance 21-30. Please indicate your desire to speak by using a raised hand function in Zoom or send our meeting host a note in chat to indicate your desire to speak publicly. Mr. Lucas, I see one hand up. I'll see you.
Yes, I see one hand, although I did have a request for comment for that from Susan Goldsworth. And she should now be able to unmute. I'm not sure if her comment was specific to Amendment Four or if she'd like to comment on the ordinance as a whole. So I'll let her speak to that. Susan, you should be unmuted now if you'd like to comment.
Okay, maybe we can go to Mr. Fig and come back to her. Unless she's ready now, no?
No, yes, that's, that's fine. Mark Fig should be able to unmute.
Thank you, Mark Fig from Fig Property Group. And I haven't been able to obviously talk about Amendment Four with any of my colleagues on the Monroe County Apartment Association, but just, you know, I'll give you some general thoughts on, on Amendment Four. So as a practical matter, we have almost no month-to-month leases. I mean, I know they exist, but it's generally bad policy. And we all, most of us have mortgages and bankers like written leases, so just know that. I think Amendment Four is probably better for us, better for tenants too. Obviously it misses the education piece. But as a practical matter, what happens at a lease renewal is if it's the same tenants, and I mean all the tenants stay the same, if it's more than one, you know, person, we would actually have a lease renewal form that's references the original lease, which also references whatever other documents are associated with it. And by the way, most of us, and nobody in our association has told us that they are not still using the rights and responsibilities form. It's, it is a great tool and we all are used to it. My lease is still reference it and still use it. So, I mean, I know that's not a hand thing, but it, you know, it's been successful for all of us. So, and honestly, as little over occupancy as there actually is, I mean, I don't know that having or not having Amendment Four is going to make a whole lot of difference anyway as a practical matter. So, and in terms of old leases, like a five-year-old lease, I mean, if we, if that lease is still in effect, we still got it handy. And, you know, so I mean, I gotta tell you, it's really rare. I mean, if I get it, somebody that stays for three years, it's a miracle. So, you know, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Fig. Do we have anyone else, Mr. Lucas?
I'll see if Susan is able to connect the audio now.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. How are you?
Good, thank you. I appreciate all the work that you put into this. I know I had sent all of you a letter as well. And so this is definitely, you know, different because I was very concerned about privacy as I had mentioned before. So I appreciate keeping records private. Mrs. Sandberg had asked a question, what landlords had thought. And I also want to address what Mr. Zodi had asked about upon complaint. As I had pointed out, I'm still using the rights and responsibilities. I am okay with the form that you have as a part of this packet. I'm still, as we sign leases, using the other form currently. So I am okay with using this form that you have as a part of this packet, except for on the back, there was a, on the form, I think there was a word about submitting, but anyways, we took that part out. The other thing I would only would say asking, because it was upon complaint, I didn't know if it was an oversight in 3C so that they weren't singling out a single class of landlords, if you just added the word upon complaint in 3C and if that could be added. So I would ask for that to be considered. But I thank all of you for the hard work you're putting into it and also addressing some of the privacy issues and the relationship issues that were talked about previously.
Okay, thank you for your comments. I think that may have been for the entire ordinance and I didn't catch it. Supposed to the amendment, but I think that's fine. Do we have any other public commenters?
Yes, Andrew Gunther. And you should now be able to unmute.
Thank you, Mr. Gunther. Go ahead, this is for Amendment Four.
Thank you, Council President Sims, again for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Andrew Gunther, for the record. As someone who has previously worked for landlords and property managers and currently who rents, I would say that I am in support of Amendment Four. I don't see the harm in Amendment Four to the overall process in that if like Mr. Fig said, you do have tenants who leave and you replace them year after year, you would still be required every time you sign new tenants in order, in order to be compliant, you would have to fill out that form. So for many apartments in Bloomington, especially student-centric apartments, this would still be a yearly process. For tenants like me who have rented for four plus years in the same location, this would be another piece of paperwork which I don't have to sign, which my landlord doesn't have to keep a hold of. And is another instance of where I won't, wouldn't have to go to see my landlord in order to do this because currently we do most of our communications online. It may seem small, you know, it's just a couple pieces of paper, who really cares? But in my experience working in property management, every time there's a new requirement or every time there's a new form, it often translates even in minor increased costs. There's more man hours involved in keeping track of these records and signing these forms and explaining what they are. There's more man hours involved, there's more man hours in storage and digital capacity involved with actually storing them on hand, forehand at any given point in time and then replacing them year after year. So I think this is a good compromise in keeping in the idea that people who are renting for longer periods of time, who are more stable tenants, are rewarded through the process by not having to do it repeatedly. To say that it's an education perspective, I can understand that to a degree. However, tenants aren't idiots and neither are landlords. Once you fill out the form, you know what the form is. You don't need to do it year after year after year in order to know how many people you're allowed to have in your apartment. It's usually laid out in your lease. So I, I, again, I don't see the harm in this amendment. In fact, I think it benefits renters and benefits landlords equally. So I urge you to pass Amendment Four. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have any more comments, Mr. Lucas?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay, thank you. We will now go back to council for final comments on Amendment Four. Do we have any final comments? Councilmember Sandberg?
Thank you. Based on the feedback that we've just heard and staff's really lack of, of really finding any, any major opposition to this, I think the basic trigger for any kind of change and update in this whole education piece would just be the fact that renters may turn over quite frequently. We're in a college town, a lot of the renters are students, not all certainly. But I think that opportunity might just happen, might just get triggered just with automatic renewal of, of leases. And so I think the case has been made that for long-term renters, there's not a need for this as much. And that landlords themselves, and this is especially the feedback that, you know, we got a lot from the emails that we've received over the past week, landlords want to have this opportunity to be accountable. They're not looking to slide certainly and, and, and not educate their tenants as to what the city's ordinance are with respect to the occupancy. And so I think I will be fine with Amendment Four. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments from council? Thank you. Any further comments from council? Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, I asked about the comparison with amendment two, because I co-sponsored amendment two and I voted for it. I think that a lot of members of the public have reached out to me and to my colleagues and to the administration since that discussion two weeks ago. And I've learned to look at the situation from different perspectives. And I now feel that it's not necessary to have somebody read the affidavit and sign the affidavit every year. It does seem burdensome. It, you know, the, maybe I'll speak more to this when we talk about the, the ordinance as a whole. But, but certainly there's been food for thought about the whole idea of occupancy limits. And, and whether we're singling out student renters or renters in smaller buildings versus larger buildings and things like that. But overall, I think that the education piece is still there. And given that the staff are not opposed, I also will support this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council members? Any comments? Thank you. Before we move forward, Mr. Zodi, have you had your hand up again?
No, I'm just thinking through processes here and if the lease, it's a multi-year tenant. If the lease is still current, then it shouldn't be a problem to produce the affidavit because it's on file with the, the current lease is readily on file. We had concern that three years back, that those files are gone and the tenants are gone and it's all kind of archived, right? So I'm just making sure that I'm processing the input we got from folks correctly and transparently. I, I mean, there's no disagreement that the current lease, sorry to throw this in, Mr. President. I've just, we gotta be deliberate here on this process. We can't miss anything. And so if the lease is current, even for a multi-year tenant. My feeling is it shouldn't be a problem to keep the affidavit with that and produce it upon inspection. So again, if you all agree with that notion, I'm like, we're good with this. I don't, you know, we're confusing, so thank you.
No, no, you're fine. Thank you for the comment. And I think that was kind of the response I was hoping for at the beginning of this long discussion. I would ask you what was staff's position, so thank you for your patience in talking us through all of this. Do we have any other comments from council? Okay, on this amendment, one thing that I will say on my comments. So many things that I've heard from the public, there's just a couple pieces of paper and who really cares. That, that concerns me a little bit. We care or we wouldn't be here discussing it this evening. I know I'm learning that it's not as frequent as I thought in the past of over occupancy issues. But I still think the educational aspect is very, very important. And I like Councilmember Piedmont Smith sponsored amendment two as well. And it was predicated basically on the educational aspect. And making sure that, that we can voluntary comply and not have problems. I'm very glad to hear that landlords and building manager, property manager, who are still using the tenants' rights and responsibilities funds. I think that was very helpful and smart on their part to do that. So, having said that. Me as the president will put this question to vote by announcing the question and calling for the roll on amendment four of ordinance twenty one dash thirty. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rala?
Yes.
Rosenbarker?
Yes.
Scambolary?
Yes.
And Sims?
Yes.
Okay.
And that is amendment four is adopted eight zero. We now go back to ordinance thirty one dash, I'm sorry, twenty one dash thirty as amended. We will now go to council for any questions on ordinance twenty one dash thirty as amended. Councilmember Flaherty.
Thanks. That was, my hand gets blurry in the blurred background. Sorry, for Mr. Zodi, I, I had a question about, and maybe you don't have hard numbers that we spoke last week. And, and I kind of asked about it and I'm not sure if you were able to get this. But thinking for the last few years, let's say, I'm wondering, A, how many over occupancy complaints per year occur, I guess, that are documented in some way or another, as opposed to informal? And then, B, of those, how many, either a number or like what percentage is it determined that, that the, the complaint is accurate and that an over occupancy is in fact occurring? And, and an issue of, you know, a notice of violation is issued? Because I know there are some, someone might see a lot of cars because somebody's visiting and, and report an over occupancy. You know, for instance, which is, turns out not to be accurate. So those two pieces, how, how many complaints are we getting per year that are documented in some way about over occupancy? And then two, how many of them are proven to be valid where we issue a notice of violation?
Yeah, well, I think the estimate is on an annual basis, we get about between twenty-five and thirty either allegations, complaints combined with investigations. So in, in total, that's the amount that we estimate. Now, I'll tell you back to the data collection standpoint, that we have not had a system in place that I think tracks that data that can be readily available. And we are having a new software system that we're implementing that will help us track a lot of things better. We have the system that's called Rent Pro, which doesn't currently have an over occupancy sort of tag in it. We've talked about doing that in the interim. But we really need to go in the, in the midst of everything we deal with, with properties, over occupancy is one of the things. And so it's a piece that the department, I think, can change the way it tracks. So I don't have hard numbers for you and that's, that's the reason why. And we think the affidavit will provide that standard where we have a better way to track it as we look at how we change processes in the department, including the new software. And put some teeth around that, so it's, give you a little more detail. We have the Rent Pro database in, in the office. We're working with a company called Tyler that sort of more offers a more comprehensive, more updated system that we can work with. Rent Pro's been, been great, but we've got so much that we function with in the department that that's required. And we're going, our staff is going through that process now. So I think this will help us collect better and harder data to answer your question.
And, and so do we, do we not know then how many notices of violation, violation are issued for over occupancy each year?
Yeah, I would have to, I would have to ask legal if there's a, a, a number that we've issued year by year. I, I don't have that information. So Daniel, I don't know if we have any notices of violation on over occupancy that has been issued from legal or from planning, but we don't have it from hand.
Yeah, I, I don't have that information available with me tonight either to provide. I think the, the majority of the notice of violation would actually come from the planning and transportation department because the investigation enforcement side of occupancy is handled by them under title twenty.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any other questions from council on ordinance twenty one dash thirty as amended? Okay. Councilmember Flaherty.
Sorry, yeah, thank you. Yeah, one other area of, of relevant concern for me is in implementing a solution like this, which is, is pretty wide in scope. I want to make sure it is the most narrowly tailored solution that would work to address a real problem. So that, the second piece was, was what my first question was about, you know, the, how the scope of the problem. But this, but the piece about the solutions that we could bring to bear on, on that problem, whatever the size, are relevant to me too. So I, I'm, I'm wondering if, if, if city staff could speak more directly to the shortcomings of our current tools. So when a, when a violate, you know, when a over occupancy, alleged over occupancy is, is reported. Why aren't we able to adequately follow up on those with the current enforcement tools we have through planning and transportation or otherwise? Whether it's a lease request form that was mentioned or, or simply speaking with the landlord. I know I spoke to Mr. Fig earlier, for instance, and, and he, he said if it's ever been brought to his attention that, that there is an alleged over occupancy. A, he wants to know about it because I mean, somebody's living there who's not paying for the space. But B, that it's resolved through a conversation with the landlord and a conversation with the tenants to make sure that's not the case. You know, so I'm just, I'm a little worried that we are creating this, this sort of very wide-ranging system to do something that we are already able to effectively do, which is to investigate and enforce over occupancy if and when it occurs in those, you know, dozen or, or two dozen cases a year. So could you speak to the, the inadequacy of the current tools available to us and why, why we, why the department feels this is necessary?
Sure. My perspective, you know, two minutes in here, council member, is a couple of things. I think the department does a lot, has done a lot. There's a lot of institutional knowledge that's in place in the department and we've lost a lot too. And, you know, we've got thousands of files in the office about each property. And the myriad issues that come up with each property are so varied that sort of putting something in place to track every single one requires a lot. And I think that's what this new system, one of the things this new system will allow us to do. Because you've got, you know, overgrowth, for instance, under title six. Overgrowth here could be something different than the overgrowth here or over occupancy here alleged could be something. It's, it's not, there isn't a standard. And we've got to, in my opinion, have to be apply, willing to apply and able to apply standards for issues. There's the eight-inch rule with grass. Okay, so if you go out and grass is over eight inches, that's allowable for a ticket. But we're dealing with the property now that there's a little bit of eight-inch grass, but there's also a lot of natural growth that is not invasive. So what do we do? You know, we work with the homeowner. That with, with looking at the number of rental units we have, the issues around over occupancy and the fact that we have that code in place now as a compliance slash enforcement tool. Applying that standard, knowing that we can go anytime there is a complaint, we can say, here's, we'll request the affidavit or we will go out and do a complaint inspection. Here's the affidavit. We're not searching through different types of leases. We're not asking, okay, well, show us more if you only have a verbal lease. You know, what documentation is there of who's living there? There's no sort of flat standard where we can say every rental unit in this universe should have an affidavit applied to it. That should be the thing that we can ask for on any rental unit in the city and in this universe of rental units that we're talking about. That puts aside any other paperwork, any changed lease, any, anything else that the inspector can go out and say, okay, we need this affidavit. And that puts the legal teeth around it. But it also helps us manage our relationship with the tenants and landlords. That we can't manage that, we can't require that rights and responsibilities document anymore that, that I heard somebody say they are, you know, the landlords, a lot of them are still using it. But a lot of them are not. And our relationship with the rental community is changing. And so we've got a, we've got a lot coming down the pike that we've got to make sure that we're consistent as best as we can. And I think that our inspectors, you know, defer to their judgment all the time in my young tenure here because they've got the institutional knowledge, they can tell you off the top of their head. You rattle off an address and they can tell you what the story is most times that property, but it's going to be different than the next one. And so without that standard, we have trouble with consistent enforcement. And so I think it's, it's trying to, you're kind of trying to find a needle in a haystack. And this helps, this helps level the playing field a little bit, I think, on how we're able to retrieve information if there's an over occupancy complaint or concern, because it's that, that same standard is in place for all the units.
Thank you for responding, Mr. Zodi. Did you have anything else, Councilmember Flaherty?
I appreciate that insight. I guess just a small follow-up of like, is there a, a particular problem you can name though? That, you know, where planning and transportation, for instance, has had an alleged violation of over occupancy and, and has been unable for some reason to, you know, verify or issue, or, or issue a notice of violation or not. Where this would then allow them to do so. I, I get that it makes it easier on your end. I, I, you know, I acknowledge that. But if we're talking about a pretty small problem and, and a pretty big solution in a sense. I, I wanted to try to address, you know, the, the failures of, of, of the current tools. If there's not more to add beyond what you said, that's okay. I, I appreciate that perspective, but.
Yeah, I don't know if I have a lot more to add there. I do think it just, you're not sort of searching. You're not sort of searching for information. You should have it right there available, who's on the lease. And if it's not produced, then that is a violation in itself and there's a reason to sort of advance the investigation beyond that, I think. So I don't have much more to add. I won't, I won't speak to planning's processes and, or like thereof or anything like that. I'll defer to them. And I know they're not on tonight, but I, I, I won't, don't want to speak on behalf of planning. But I think in terms of our department and the variety of issues we deal with with properties. This, this can apply a standard that makes it more efficient, certainly to track information in our opinion.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Before I go to the public, do we have any more, Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, can you remind us, Mr. Zodi, why is this limit, is this ordinance to be limited to properties where there are four or fewer units?
The standard we put in place there is that's the threshold for other city services, so trash and recycling and, and that kind of thing. And I think anecdotally, and again, this is where we need to collect data. A lot of the concerns with over occupancy come from areas where there are single family or smaller numbers of rental units. I understand that visibility is easier, so you see a number of cars parked outside a house versus, you know, more people living in a one unit of a large complex. But the, that's where this will allow us to collect some better data here. But the threshold we put in place is because of the access to city services there. And if legal has anything else to say there, I'll defer to them.
Well, but isn't, I mean, at the housing committee meeting, we spent some time talking about hands responsibilities as far as making sure rental property is safe. And sometimes when you have more people living in a property, you know, depending on how many, you know, paths of egress in case of a fire and things like that, you could have a more dangerous situation if you have, have more people living there. And it, it seems, I mean, that would be just as true in a big apartment building as in a, a house with, you know, three unrelated adults in one house. So is there not the same concern about over occupancy in the bigger buildings?
No, I think over occupancy generally is a concern, but we think that this universe, given the threshold with, with services that this was, this is the universe where we should be looking at putting this standard in place. We haven't discussed going, going further than that right now. So yes, I mean, we want people to be in safe housing across the city. There's no doubt in my mind and there's no, no question there. So that wasn't the, you know, the issue of over occupancy, yes, of course, is a safety issue. But in terms of where we think other city services are, are being applied, this made sense. So, and Daniel, I see you come up there if you have something else.
Yes, thank you. Oops, sorry.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Hang on. Okay, I see you now. Did you have a comment, Mr. Dixon?
I, I did want to add one, one other thing. In section D of the proposed ordinance as amended, it does also allow for a requirement for this affidavit from otherwise exempt properties. If there are complaints made about over occupancy with those units. So it could, as drafted, be applied to large units if we do receive complaints about that.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Thank you. Do we have Councilmember Rosenbarker?
Thank you. This is a follow-up on Piedmont's question. Do we require apartments with five or more units to complete the inspection program?
Not sure I understand the council or the, excuse me, the question, councilmember. Not sure I understand the council or that, excuse me, the question, council member, a building with five. Five units?
Or more units, five or more units, right, like what, you know. So do they have to be inspected and certified on a, you know, on a rolling basis, like the three, four, or five year inspection?
Yes, so it's not just, yeah, yes.
So it's a small would go through that process where like every window has to be able to open and there has to be smoke detectors and carbon monoxide and all that stuff?
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions from council? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to the public for comments on ordinance twenty one dash thirty as amended. Please indicate your desire to speak publicly by using the raise hand function in Zoom. And or send us our meeting host a note via chat to indicate your desire to speak publicly. Mr. Lucas, who do we have?
First up is Dave Warren. Right, good evening, my name is Dave Warren. And I I really appreciate the work of both Hand and the council to to reduce the concerns regarding this proposal. But I ask that you reject twenty one thirty simply because the the underlying occupancy ordinance in the U D O. Is discriminatory, it discriminates, it discriminates on age, housing tenure, income, and through its definition of of a family. And so requiring affidavits to help enforce the occupancy ordinance really just continues this pattern of of treating renters differently than than homeowners. You know, treating a a large portion of our community as as different than another part of our community. You know, adding burdens to landlords and tenants, it certainly doesn't reduce the the affordability problems that that we have here. And it really makes me question why this is is such a priority for for the administration right now. And I know, you know, this is public comment, it's not a back and forth. But I I would be interested to know just approximately what percent of the people Mr. Zoe spoke with over the last couple of weeks are renters. You know, the city is sixty five percent renter, so I'm just curious to know. What what percent of of folks who are contacted about this proposal are indeed renters? So thank you for the opportunity, good night.
Good night, Mr. Warren, thank you for your comments. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next is Mark Fig.
Thank you, Mark Fig, Fig Property Group Kirkwood Management, Board Member of Monroe County Apartment Association. You know, we submitted a letter from M C A today, I submitted a letter on M C A behalf. I'll let Jordan Evans, our president, speak to that after my time. I just want to say that, you know, I don't support the ordinance simply because I don't see the evidence of an over occupancy problem. We reached out to our membership of representing over four thousand units. Nobody had had any recollection or, you know, nothing about an over occupancy issue in in any kind of recent memory. So I feel like we're doing something that, you know, maybe it is necessary, but I I don't see the case for it. I would beg you to not pass this. If you're going to pass it, please wait till you get the form done and right, because the devil's in the details. I know that can always be changed later, but I think it's very important that the form, if it if this passes is is, you know, perfect, or as perfect as it can be. I I just have to remind everybody, we do have a housing crisis in this town, it's it's real. Just look at what's going on in the county. I give amazing credit to your body as well as Plan Commission and Hand and the administration for what's happened in the city during during these last year or two of. The the Plax Amendment, densification, the new U D O, I mean, we're really taking stride, making strides in that regard. I'm very, very pleased with that. I wish you guys could infect the county council, the county commissioners in the same way. So, let's see. So I would, I would also mention that the large buildings that was mentioned. That's mostly what I do, every unit does get inspected on cycle. Remember, the legislation for the for the product in town and those neighborhoods that the three unrelated adults. Legislation is based on is not the downtown bigger complexes generally. I mean, that's not where the issues are. And in fact, because we generally have sprinkler systems and robust systems in place. I will tell you, I never over occupy, I'm always under occupied. If I have a three bedroom unit downtown and or a more modern product, I can have five people there, that never happens. So my newest project at Fourteenth and College, I have occupancy for two hundred, I probably got ninety. So it's just, you know, that the bigger stuff, I think it's a waste of time and and a waste of hands time to even worry about it. And so. You know, the diversity in our community and the the def, the changing definitions of family. You know, I'm not bucking the the three hundred related adult legislation that's already on the books. But I'm saying that at some point, we probably ought to be thinking about that. Because the best way to house a person is in a, in the cheapest way is in a building that already has a bedroom or can share a bedroom. And I know that it doesn't apply everywhere, but I just think we probably need to refresh that. I was around when that happened and it made sense, a lot of sense at the time, but I think it's an antiquated thing now personally. So those are my comments and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Fig, who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next up is Jordan Evans.
Thank you. Good evening, council, my name is Jordan Evans. I am the President of Monroe County Apartment Association. I also am a renter and I also am the property manager for Horn Properties here in Bloomington. I want to thank John Zodi, Brent Pierce, and Daniel Dixon for the time they gave us while we did collaborate since first hearing about this amendment two weeks ago. And I do have a prepared statement from the Monroe County Apartment Association for all. Monroe County Apartment Association includes one hundred and ten members, including the owners and property managers of four thousand and sixty rental units in Bloomington and Monroe County. The M C A's goal is to protect, educate, and improve the rental industry in Monroe County, Indiana. To further its goals, M C A holds monthly educational meetings for its membership with topics ranging from compliance with the Fair Housing Act. Safety, Hand, and Building Code compliance, also the best practices in the rental industry. While M C A membership is comprised of owners and property man, men, managers, its members strive to be good landlords and manage their properties in a way that protects their tenants and their community. For most of our members, Bloomington is home. City of Bloomington Hand has been a member of the M C A for several years and a frequent speaker at our educational meetings. The M C A values the collaborative relationship it has had with Hand and its directors over the years. While M C A was disappointed that Hand did not reach out to discuss ordinance twenty one dash thirty before it was presented to city council on June second. M C A board members and Hand representatives have had productive meetings and discussions over the past two weeks. The changes now proposed by Hand vastly improve ordinance twenty one dash thirty, removing the requirements that tenants reveal contact information and familial relationship. And that the form is to be kept in the landlord's file rather than become a public record once submitted to Hand. This does protect our tenants' privacy and interests. This reduces a landlord's duty of verification from undefined personal and diligent inquiry into the tenant's familial relationships to a reasonable inquiry. Limited to verifying the tenant's identity is less onerous. While these changes, if approved by the council, make the legislation less intrusive and burdensome, the M C A does not support adoption of ordinance twenty one dash thirty. We believe that any legislation adoption adopted should aim to solve a problem and at the least restrictive means should be employed first. It has been claimed that there is an over occupancy in Bloomington. No data has been presented to support this assertion. And in the past three years, no ordinance violation cases have been filed alleging that a landlord or tenant over occupied a property. A review of U reports over the last three years reveal only fifteen complaints submitted alleging over occupancy. Of those, three were found to be invalid complaints, six were complaints about unregistered rentals. So that gives you the final number of six over three years. With approximately twenty nine thousand rental permits issued in Bloomington, this means that less than one thousandth of a percent of rental units are subject to over occupancy complaints per year. While estimates have been offered of more complaints, these do not appear to be complaints that were submitted into U report or otherwise properly tracked and investigated. If over occupancy exists, it should be tracked and investigated and less burdensome approaches for addressing it should be attempted first. The M C A urges you to vote against ordinance twenty one dash thirty. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next up is Joe Bowlinger, Bowlinger.
Yes, thank you very much, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Great, just want to reiterate and endorse some of the comments that others have made. I'm a renter, been a renter for oh, fifteen years here in Bloomington. Let me just say, from a personal point of view, even though I do really appreciate the flexibility that Hand and and John have shown. Toward, you know, adapting this amendment and the council has shown, I think that shows a lot of wisdom, trying to make an efficient process. I do think it's trying to solve a problem that doesn't particularly exist. I also think that you're being asked to enforce the underlying U D O portion of this, which is misguided. And discriminatory toward renters. And so, you know, you guys have the power to choose with through your discretion on how to enforce those kinds of things. And I would urge you to to go in a different direction. I also say, you know, personally, as a renter, if if. My personal relationships are being investigated by my landlord and by the city, that does feel intrusive. I have had complicated family relationships as a renter and don't really think it's anybody's business. Especially, you know, I've also been the subject of complaints about cars, you know, go, too many cars coming in and out of a house. When I'm just a guy who has friends. And I think we've seen a lot of those complaints that were mentioned turned out to be invalid. You know, people will complain about whatever, it doesn't mean we actually have an underlying problem of over occupancy. So I would encourage you to to vote against this ordinance. And again, despite the fact that I really do appreciate all all your work, so thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Bowlinger. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next up is Avery Thatcher.
Thank you, council members, I guess I've been a a Realtor and property management for twenty years, a member of the Monroe County Apartment Association as well. I wholeheartedly support their resolution and stance on matter. I feel if there's only six valid complaints in three years, this is way too wide of a brush to be a, and tool to be using. If we were going to add, require a occupancy affidavit, maybe having Hand require it to be filled out on demand. If there is a problem would be a more more adapt approach that would be targeted towards the actual problem. And. I think it's obviously rushed as well with the form not being corrected yet, Monroe County Apartment Association not being consulted. I I appreciate the intent and I do appreciate the changes that were made in Amendment Three. Definitely a lot better. Twenty one thirty is a lot better now than it was a couple of weeks ago, but I do urge you to vote no. And to require a demonstrated problem before creating such a a vast tool and a added burden to. To other landlords in town and tenants to develop a form, another form. I do question the legality as well, if the tenants' rights and responsibilities can no longer be filled out if a lease amendment like this. Would not be challenged by the state, I would be surprised, so. And I think that questions about or problems with over occupancy by residents, I'm also a resident of Elm Heights. Often come down to noise and trash and the police department has pretty much given up on noise complaints, I feel like. Multiple addresses, we receive multiple complaints and nothing happens, trash isn't, it is all over the neighborhood. Some of the resources could be perp towards that instead of instead of this initiative. And I think we get a lot better results. Thank you for my time, your time.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have anyone else, Mr. Lucas?
Yes, next up is Andrew Gunther.
Thank you again to the council for the opportunity to speak this evening, my name's Andrew Gunther, for the record. As I've said before, I'm currently a renter, I previously worked for a landlord and property management company. And I have previously served on the Bloomington Board of Housing Quality Appeals with former Hand Director Doris Sims. There are hundreds of problems with renting in the city of Bloomington, I mean, any city, you know. And many of the problems. Can be handled by Hand and the city by changing policies and enforcing the ones on the books. This policy solves none of those problems. I agree with many of the past commentators that over occupancy, you know, with six valid cases per year. Is not a big enough issue to be using a tool of this broadness. You know, we need a scalpel and we're using a a sledgehammer at this point. I I I think it it's not a sufficient tool in that it's it's way too broad. I would also like to support what. Dave Warren said about urging you to vote down this legislation based on the fact that occupancy limits themselves are discriminatory. You know, it strikes me as interesting that if I own enough capital, enough money and have good enough credit, that I'll be able to purchase a single family home. And theoretically, I could stuff as many people as I want who are unrelated to me, I can invite as many friends as I needed to come live in my single family home. I'm not aware of any law in Bloomington that precludes me from doing so. But since I don't have enough capital and I don't have the good enough credit to be able for a housing loan or a mortgage. I'm renting and I'm forced to abide by this occupancy limit. That people of a greater class are not held by. I'd also like to say that during my time on the Board of Housing Quality Appeals, we had many cases come by month after month. That were going unenforced and that's not the fault of anyone in Hand, because the problem was staffing. There's, as they said, twenty nine plus thousand rental units in Bloomington that have permits. And they, there are only so many Hand people and employees to go around. I believe that the manpower and the the man hours of Hand should be better used on to enforce laws already on the books. Over occupancy is not one of those laws that is routinely violated, it's routinely things like health and safety violations that actually impact the health and safety of renters in Bloomington. That we could be, I, in my opinion, in my experience, policing a lot more effectively with some landlords that do not do their due diligence, like many of the landlords in the Monroe County Apartment Association may do. I'd also like to agree that with Mark Fig, that there's no landlords in Bloomington that I know of that are reputable, that are pushing to over occupy. When I worked for a landlord and a property management company, the most common complaint for over occupancy that we received were internal. You know, you have a three bedroom apartment, someone's girlfriend is staying too long, there's limited space in the fridge, there's limited outlets to be used. And someone calls and complains anonymously and gets their roommate's girlfriend kicked out and we handle those internally. Never have I worked for a landlord that had a complaint go from, come from Hand regarding over occupancy. So I don't think that this legislation does anything that actually benefits renters in Bloomington. I don't think it does anything to benefit landlords, I don't even think there's anything to benefit Hand. I think it's basically legislation that's a show in order to look like we're enforcing a problem that doesn't exist. It may be a priority for the administration, but certainly not a priority for any renter that I know. They think that there's plan that could be done, that the council could be working on, that the mayor could be working on, that Hand could be working on. That's not addressed at all by this legislation. So I encourage you to vote this legislation down. Like I said earlier, though, if you are to pass it, the amendments that you have passed have made it less egregious, have made it less invasive. But I still think overall, like Dave Warren said, that occupancy limits are discriminatory inherently based on class, which oftentimes is based off of things such as race, ethnicity, cultural background, socioeconomic background. Those things need to be taken into consideration. And I think that by policing people differently, you're inherently treating people differently and you're separating them into groups. And that's what we should be avoiding as a community, not encouraging and enforcing. So thank you. Have a great rest of your evening. I encourage you to vote no.
Thank you. Do we have any other takers, Mr. Lucas?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay.
Yes, we have one late one. Susan Goldsworthy, Goldsworth, should now be able to comment.
Okay, so am I unmuted now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. Yes, if you're going to pass 2130, I think the form becomes very important because otherwise we don't know what the form is going to say. I do believe this altogether is much better than where it was, if it is needed at all. I do think that I do agree with some of the comments that have been made, that the data should drive it. So if there is a problem, then yes, it should be addressed, but it should be based on complaints. And I don't think a certain class of people should be discriminated against, nor should certain class of landlords be discriminated against, I guess, on that. But it was very important to me to reiterate, I would not want the form, if it's not the form that was shown here, to ever become, to include the names, the phone, with phone numbers and personal contact information or relationships. So I do think it should be considered altogether. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have anyone else, Mr. Lucas?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay, thank you. Saying none, we'll go to council for final comments on ordinance 21-30 as amended. Councilmember Rosenberg, Rosenbarger, I'm sorry.
Hey, no, thanks. Thank you. It's a long name. I want to start by saying a really big thank you to Mr. Zodi and his team. I think that the collaboration done on this with council members is the most I have seen yet as my, with my time on council. I think it has been really wonderful to have phone calls with you, you all, and go back and forth. And I just feel like you're really listened to. And I think together, all of us have like created an ordinance that we all are, have been a part of. And I am very appreciative of that process. Looking forward to doing that more often with, with you, you all in hand. Next, I will say, you know, I try to make data-driven decisions. And with this, I actually think the city is doing a really good job at enforcing this particular part of the UDO. I don't know how many rental units we have. I mean, 10,000, right? We have a lot of units. And to have 25 to 30 complaints a year, I think we are doing a rather superb job at getting this under wraps. As many commentators said, so I don't necessarily see that this is a problem that we need to tackle necessarily in this way. If we were to do that, okay, well, I guess I've heard, you know, about enforcement across the board of things in the UDO. Mostly I consider those other complaints like noise and trash and vehicles in neighborhoods, right? Also, I think mostly complaint-driven, but I am definitely up for looking at solutions to that. Those types of complaints for homeowners and renters alike, because I think everybody can be in violation of all three of those. So that I am definitely interested in doing. I think what some commentators said and landlords have said is pretty accurate, that landlords who are willing to complete this are the landlords who are doing everything by the books already. So they have leases, they're potentially doing their rights and responsibilities out of their own free will, and they are doing their inspections on time and really fixing everything. So I am then interested in trying to figure out more ways to get to those landlords who are kind of like flying under the radar without leases, without inspections, and where we have people actually living in like subpar habitable homes or potentially uninhabitable homes. Just the idea, I mean, I think in the UDO, also owner occupied units have to follow these rules. Two of three unrelated, you know, maxing out at three unrelateds or following the definition of family or any of the other exceptions. It's hard for me to get on board when we are treating renters differently. What I want to do is like narrow that gap of how we treat renters and homeowners in our city. And I'm worried that this goes the opposite direction for me. I like that Hand, Hand staff contacted practitioners and it was really great to hear from them. And, you know, experts in the field, landlords, tenants are also experts in the field, I would say here. And a lot of folks saying this is not the way to go about it. So I would like to, I think, keep looking at if this isn't it, what does that look like? What does that look like? And then in general, I don't know if we have the time on, this is my last point. I would just like to take a minute to say I am questioning the policy of three unrelateds. I mean, I see where it is discriminatory about like what a family means and how we define that. The rule that people 55 and older aren't subject to this. I think there are people of all ages that can live, you know, comfortably and safely without disturbing neighbors of all ages. So that is problematic to me. And I think in a city with a housing shortage and affordability challenges, like can we look at the idea about people living in bedrooms that exist instead of just capping it unrelated? So that's a little off topic here. So for those reasons, I do not plan to support this, but I just would like to reiterate that I've really enjoyed and appreciated this process. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rosenbarger. Do we have any other comments from council members? Councilmember Sandberg.
Thank you. I think it helps to have a historical perspective on this. And of course, I have been through several hand directors, Lisa Abbott during the Cruzan administration, Doris Sims, and now most recently John Zodi, who I give very strong compliments to. He has not only reached out to the landlords and to renters, but he has reached out to a number of neighborhood groups. I know that for a fact. I joined him on at least one. And so he has done his due diligence. And I think one of the things we must acknowledge is the city of Bloomington has long been known for a very strong hand department that is concerned about properties, that is concerned about, you know, housing that is not substandard. You know, having standards that it goes beyond occupancy and the problems that over occupancy have most certainly presented to neighborhoods throughout the years. But also the fact that it's good for renters to have housing that is well managed and well maintained and with landlords that respect the UDOs and, and are, are, you know, I, I say in good faith, the vast, vast majority of landlords in this community are good citizens like the ones we've heard from in here tonight, like Mark Fig and, and all of you who have spoken and are part of the Apartment Association. We're not saying that you are violators of our code and that we're, you know, we're, we're out to get you. We appreciate your cooperation with the Hand Department in maintaining our housing standards. We are a community that is 65% rental. And that is a huge, huge proportion of the housing that our residents need. And it needs to be quality housing. It needs to be well maintained for everyone's safety and everyone's comfort in neighborhoods when over occupancy does indeed pose a problem. It may be rare, and that's a good thing, because part of having a strong hand department that regulates rental properties is, that's a good thing. That's a very, very good thing for the city of Bloomington. And so for traditional reasons and also what we're dealing with currently, I very strongly support this and would encourage the support of the rest of council. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sandberg. Do you have any other comments from council members? Councilmember Rallo.
Well, I think that Councilmember Sandberg put it very well. So I don't, I would just like to add that I appreciate Director Zodi for reaching out to landlords to reach a compromise and one that protects privacy. I don't find this onerous. I, I think it's, yes, it's another form. But Hand's brought this forward as the best tool to assist them in enforcement. And I think they do an excellent job and I would like to assist them in that. So I will be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith and Councilmember Flaherty.
Thank you, President Sims. I will be supporting this ordinance as well. I think that it provides the education, it provides some regularized compliance issues that may, may be important for us. And I think it's, it is helpful for the education of the renter and the landlord and provides kind of a forum. So thank you very much. I will be supporting this.
Thank you. Councilmember Flaherty.
Yeah, I won't be supporting this ordinance in the end. And I think there's sort of narrowly two reasons for that, which I covered in the questions. First is I think the scope of the problem is really very, very small, as has sort of been demonstrated. Like maybe count on your hands over the last few years, how many notices of violation have been issued? We actually don't, we never got that number though. And I think that, that alone, the fact that we don't know the actual data is, is a reason enough not to implement a quite broad policy. When, when we know the problem is small, we don't know exactly how, how small. And second, I, you know, with notice disrespect to city staff, I very much appreciate all their work on this and their willingness to answer questions and all the rest. But I really don't feel like I got a satisfactory answer to what's wrong with our current system? What's wrong with our current set of tools for enforcing valid complaints of over occupancy of the relevant, you know, per the relevant UDO provision? It seems like it's a handful of times a year at most. And we have tools to enforce that, that sort of narrow problem. And I don't feel like it was demonstrated, at least not, not to my satisfaction. The specific mechanisms or instances in which those tools fail in order to justify what really is, you know, a very far reaching policy in terms of the number of people it impacts. And the sort of administrative burden on landlords, but also the impact on tenants. So I think those two reasons for me, just as narrowly on the ordinance, it really doesn't make sense. And I think I won't get too, in too much detail, but the underlying policy about three unrelateds is something we need to continue to think about. It discriminates based on age. People over the age of 55 don't have to abide by it. It discriminates against non-traditional family structures. And, you know, another town with a major housing affordability crisis, Boulder, Colorado, has a strong movement, for instance, called Bedsrooms Are For People, trying to change their limits to let a person per bedroom live in a, in a house. And I think that's, that's not unreasonable. I think issues that are presumed to come with young people living together, you know, on occasion or in some circumstances, noise, parking, trash, whatever, can all be regulated in more specific and targeted ways to the particular issue at hand as opposed to using an occupancy limit like this. But again, that's a conversation for another day. That's it for me. Thanks again very much to city staff for your work on this and the conversations we had.
Thank you. Do we have any further comments from city council? Okay, seeing none, I'll make a comment. I agree with Councilmember Flaherty that this is a conversation for another day. And I also agree that the unrelated and definition of family rule of law, for lack of a better term, that we're dealing with now can seem, and in fact, can be discriminatory and less equitable with certain populations and housing situations. So I think it is prudent for us that there will be future review and possible revisions in that area in line with our housing situation, some other equity issues and just some of the ways that we want to approach things here with the city. However, tonight I will be supporting this. I think there are some good elements. This isn't perfect. I expect to hear from the director of hand that the, the form itself has been updated and very workable and acceptable to those that, the stakeholders that it will most affect. I do expect to hear that. And I do think that as we move forward again, as some of my colleagues have said, we will review this. And in quite frankly, we may redefine and re reject some of the things that we've done in order to move to a more equitable situation. But where we are tonight, I think this is another tool that's can be used for the city and not only with occupancy, but with some of the quality of living, understanding the great majority of rental units that we have. And what we're talking about today is not static and it may, it definitely will change moving into the forward or into the future. But I'm happy with where we are this evening. Happy is not the right word. I'm content where we are this evening, understanding that I will be and I anticipate being a part of future discussions and possible revisions moving forward. I also want to thank the, the public for a lot of their comments. Many of those folks I know, respect and work with, some I don't know, but they have very good points. And I think they'll be relevant in our discussions moving forward. Hope we can get them all at the same table when we're having that discussion. So having or seeing, I do see one, Councilmember Pete Moncive.
Thank you, President Sims. I did raise my hand before you spoke, but I guess.
No, I'm on split screen, so I'm just doing the best I can.
I guess, I mean, I, going into tonight, I was not. I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So going into tonight, I was planning to vote in favor but upon further reflection and public comments, I, I just don't think the case has been made that this is really necessary, that this is really a problem and that we don't have tools to address the occupancy limits that we have. And I do also question those occupancy limits myself. I understand why they were put in to our ordinance, you know, many years ago. And it was, it was a concern about students and the noise and trash that perceived to have come from many student renters. But I feel like there, you know, if that, if the noise and trash are the problems, then let's address the noise and trash and not potentially take away more affordable way for, for young people or any people of any age to live only in a, in a home. Not typically family. So anyway, that's, as Councilmember Sims said, that's a have another day. I guess we need this. So I will be voting no. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any other final comments from council members? Okay, seeing none. Are we ready for the question? Will the clerk please call the roll on ordinance 21-30 as amended?
Yes, Councilmember Pete Moncive.
No.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
No.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
And Flaherty?
No.
Thank you. Ordinance 21-30 as amended is adopted five, three. Thank you very much. We do have more legislation for second reading tonight. Councilmember Flaherty.
Yes, and before I make a motion, just a quick reminder to all that being past 10:30, we are now subject to a two-thirds vote in favor of council action. So votes taken from here on, on, on forward will require that majority, two-thirds majority.
I just want to say thank you for that reminder. And this being our last meeting, of course, I would like to finish this business this evening, if at all possible. So thank you.
So I'd like to move that ordinance 21-25 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Thank you. Then probably move the second, will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
And Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. Has been properly moved and passed. Will the clerk please call the roll? I'm sorry, will the clerk please read? You can call the roll later too, but read for now. Thank you.
Ordinance 21-25 to establish the American Rescue Plan Act Fund, supporting the city of Bloomington's recovery from the COVID-19 pandemic. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance creates an American Recovery Plan Act Fund. The fund may be used for the purposes permitted by the United States Department of the Treasury under its interim final rule for the expenditure of ARPA funds, including A responding to the COVID-19 pandemic's negative economic impacts on households, small businesses, nonprofits and industries such as tourism, travel and hospitality. B to provide premium pay to eligible workers of the city that are performing essential work or providing grants to employers that have eligible workers who perform essential work. C to fund government services to the extent of the reduction in city revenues due to the COVID-19 pandemic relative to revenues collected in the fiscal year prior to the emergency 2019 and/or D to make necessary investments in water, sewer or broadband broadband infrastructure. Oh, your committee of the whole recommendation was due past seven zero zero.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Flaherty.
Yes, I move that ordinance 21-25 be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved in second and I see Ms. Guthrie. Before you start presenting, I would like to pass this virtual gavel to my vice president, Councilmember Scambalory briefly, and I shall return. Ms. Guthrie, please present.
Yes, this is the creation of the fund to receive the ARPA funds that we will be getting, which will amount to approximately 22, 22.1 million dollars. And under state guidance, we are required to create a separate fund. We did this for the CARES Act money as well. And the uses were read in the synopsis. I don't think you need me to repeat them. And they're in your memo. It's, it's generally responding to the coronavirus and economic situations and infrastructure and revenue. There's a formula in the treasury guidance for revenue replacement. So this would be set up in the controller's office and we are also required to come up with a plan for use of the funds and expenditures. And we will be doing that along with council. Know what else I need to let you know? I'm here to answer questions as well, and there is an amendment proposed.
Councilmember Flaherty?
I'm happy to, to move that amendment. I'm the sponsor on behalf of staff whenever we're ready. If Ms. Guthrie was finished with her introductory presentation.
I'm finished. There you go.
And sorry, also just a point of clarification on, on the 10:30 rule. The two-thirds majority is only needed for introduction of, of new items for legislation for council action, not the final vote. So with that, I'd like to move amendment one to ordinance, move, we adopt amendment one to ordinance 21-25.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. So.
And I'll turn it over to Ms. Guthrie.
Flaherty, I'm guessing you'll hand over to Guthrie.
This is, this is, I would call it a technical amendment. In drafting the ordinance, we focused primarily on the updated directive from the state of Indiana, which contained, it, it came out after the interim final rule from treasury and it had more detail in it and more of exactly what we needed to put in the ordinance. And in doing that, and I was reviewing everything in preparation for this meeting and noticed that the original directive from the state had a requirement for the name of the fund. It, it actually says you must call it this, which is instead of what we had put in the ordinance, the ARP Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund. So this is to change any references to the ARPA fund, which we had created a title for the ordinance with. It's just to replace the instances of that with this required title.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Guthrie. Let's come back to council. Are there questions on amendment one to 21-25? Going once, going twice? Okay, seeing none, let's go to the public for comment on amendment one to ordinance 21-25. Mr. Lucas, could you let us know if we have any requests?
I will, and if there are any members of the public that would like to comment, I'm sure you've gathered this by now, but you can either use the raised hand function or send a mess, message via chat. And I do not see any takers at the moment.
Second call? And final call for public comment? Seeing none, let's come back to council and with that, I'll turn the gavel back to President Sims.
Thank you very kindly, Councilmember Scambalory. We'll go to council for any final comments on ordinance 21-25.
Mr. President?
I'm, yes, I'm sorry.
Just, yeah, just to catch you up, this is amendment one to ordinance 21-25.
Oh, thank you. Okay. Let me get that up. Okay, thank you. Do we have any council comments on amendment one? Okay, going through. Okay, I see no further comments. And I will put this question to vote by announcing the question and calling for the roll. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Sandberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
And Smith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Amendment one passes eight, zero. Now we will consider ordinance 21-25 as amended. We don't have any further amendments that are missing, do we? No. Okay, we'll go to council for comments. I'm sorry, for questions on ordinance 21-25 as amended. Seeing none, we'll go to the public for any comments on ordinance 21-25 as amended. Please signify your intent to speak by using a raised hand function in Zoom or send our meeting host a note in chat of your intent to speak. Do we have any takers, Mr. Lucas?
It does not appear so, no.
Okay. We will now go to council for final comments on ordinance 21-25 as amended. Okay, seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. It was adopted eight, zero. We do have more legislation ready for second reading tonight. Councilmember Flaherty.
Mr. President, I move that ordinance 21-28 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved to second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. That passes eight, zero. Who do we have presenting tonight? I'm sorry, I'm looking through my screen. There you are, Ms. Shaw.
Sorry. We still need to.
Go back to you. Go for it.
We still need to read, have the clerk read the ordinance and then move to a motion to adopt.
Thank you. I should have took a longer break. Thank you very much. Will the clerk please read?
Sorry, I forgot to. Ordinance 21-28, an ordinance to amend ordinance 2023, which fix salaries for certain city of Bloomington employees for the year 2021, regarding to change the grade of existing positions in the office of the mayor, the parks department and the utilities department and revise job titles within both the police and fire departments to better reflect the nature of those positions. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance amends ordinance 2023, which fixes salaries of certain city of Bloomington employees for the year 2021 by changing the grade and job title of one existing position in the office of the mayor and changing the grade of an existing position in the parks department and in the utilities department. In addition, this ordinance changes the titles of one existing position in both the fire department and police department. All changes were made to more accurately reflect the duties of these positions. Please note, this ordinance was revised after distribution in the legislative packet, but before being introduced at the June 2nd, 2021 regular sessions, the revisions corrected two dates in the second warehouse clause from 2021 to 2020, corrected the title of the four positions that will be renamed, renamed within the police department and modified the first sentence of the synopsis to identify the particular ordinance being amended. Your committee of the whole recommendation for the, for minute one was due past seven zero zero and your ordinance has amended to pass recommendation with seven zero zero as well.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Now, Ms. Shaw, you care to present?
At first, I'd like to, to move that ordinance 21-28 be adopted.
And I'll second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved to second. Now, Ms. Shaw, would you care to present?
Yes, thank you very much for having me. It is a bit of a late night. This is Caroline Shaw, the HR Director for the city. And I'm here to present ordinance 21-28, which amends ordinance 2023. And I'll just hit the highlights because the clerk has done a really lovely job of going over the synopsis for us. We will be proposing, or we're proposing to change the grades for three current positions. The pay grade for the Parks and Recreation Golf Course Superintendent was reviewed by the Job Evaluation Committee as, and we will increase the grade of that job from five to a six. And the Office of the Mayor, the Digital Communications Specialist, grade six, is changing to a grade eight due to the positions changing duties, which has increased over the years. And then the MS4 Coordinator is changing from a grade seven to an eight. And, oh, in the Office of the Mayor, I'm sorry, I'm trying to skip this along because it's a late night. The title is also changing of that position to Digital Brand Manager. And finally, there are two cell, or two just simple title changes. And the Fire Inspection Officer, grade seven, is going to become a Fire Marshal, grade seven. And there are four Neighborhood Resource Specialists, which are now called Community Service Specialists. They are all a grade five. The total fiscal impact of the three grade changes that I mentioned is approximately $13,000. And there's no fiscal impact to the, the title changes. And I did make a mistake, as I mentioned in our last meeting, the, and so there's an amendment that we'll be discussing. And I appreciate Councilmember Scambalory and this Councilmember Sims for sponsoring this one. But I mistakenly typed the grade change in the Office of the Mayor from a six to a seven. It's actually an eight. I'm happy to take any questions at this time.
Thank you. We'll now go to council for any questions from Ms. Shaw. Okay, patience with me, flipping through the screens. Okay, seeing none, we'll now go to the public or comments on ordinance 21-28. Please indicate your desire to speak publicly by using a raised hand function in Zoom or sending our meeting host a note via chat indicating your desire to speak publicly. Do we have any takers, Mr. Lucas?
And perhaps I'll ask if, if the council would like to consider amendment one before going to the public on the ordinance as amended. I, I know Ms. Shaw mentioned that amendment.
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
Ms. Shaw mentioned an amendment that had been prepared and I think discussed at the last meeting. The council will need to, to actually adopt that amendment tonight. So if you'd like to, if the sponsor would like to move that amendment before going to the public on the ordinance as amended, you could do so now.
Yes, I'd like to move amendment one to ordinance 21-28.
Second.
Second.
And I believe Ms. Shaw already spoke to this, but is there additional comment you'd like to make, Ms. Shaw?
Not really. I just put the wrong grade on the position in the Office of the, of the mayor. The Digital Brand Manager is now a grade eight, not a seven. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I will only comment that we did discuss this in the committee meeting. I guess my only question was at the time was we made a mistake. It should have been an eight, but we wanted to go to seven, so really going from six to an eight. So just to make that clear.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any questions on amendment one? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to the public on any question, I'm sorry, comment on amendment one of ordinance 21-28. Okay, seeing none, we'll go back to the council for any final comments on amendment one for ordinance 21-28. Okay, seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll on amendment one?
Yes, sorry about that. Councilmember Scambalory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
And Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Amendment one is adopted eight, zero, and we will now.
Excuse me, Mr. President, seven zero. Excuse me, Mr. President, seven zero, councilmember.
I'm sorry. Oh, okay, sorry. I didn't, I normally got a little chit on the side. Missed one. Seven zero will now, um, go to the council for questions on ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-eight as amended. Do we have any council questions or Ms. Shaw? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to the public for comment on ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-eight as amended. Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Lucas. We'll now go back to council for any final comments on ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-eight as amended. See no final comments. Will the clerk please call the roll? Ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-eight as amended.
Yes, councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rala?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-eight as amended is adopted seven zero. And we do have further legislation for second reading tonight. Councilmember Flaherty?
Move that ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-nine be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Thank you. Been properly moved the second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rala?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
And Sims?
Yes, um, that passes seven zero. Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance twenty-one twenty-nine amending ordinance twenty-two-three, which fixes salaries of officers at the police and fire departments for the city of Bloomington for twenty-two-one regarding title change for fire inspection, inspector. Synopsis is as follows. This ordinance amends ordinance twenty-two-three, which fixes salaries of officers in the police and fire departments for the year twenty-two-one. This changes the title of the Fire Inspection Officer to Deputy Fire Marshal in the Fire Department Administration Table. Your committee of the whole recommendation was due past seven zero zero.
Thank you, councilmember Flaherty.
I move that ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-nine be adopted.
Thank you. Been properly moved the second. Ms. Shaw, would you care to present?
Me too, thank you. Ordinance twenty-one twenty-nine amends ordinance twenty-two-three, and it's one simple change, as the clerk just stated. The Fire Inspection Officer is now going to be called a Deputy Fire Marshal. I'm happy to take questions at this time.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from council from Ms. Shaw? Seeing none, we'll go to the public for any public comment on ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-nine. Okay, seeing none, we'll go back to council for any final comments on ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-nine. Okay, seeing none. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, uh, councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rala?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
And Flaherty?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-nine is adopted seven zero. Thank you very, very much. Moving on into the agenda, we have no legislations for first readings this evening. Uh, we do now have time for additional public comment. A maximum of twenty-five minutes is set aside for this section. Um, if you desire to speak, please indicate by using the raised hand function in Zoom or sending our meeting host a note via chat. Do we have any takers? You think, Mr. Lucas?
Give it just a moment. I don't see any takers at the, the moment.
That's all right. We've got a few moments. Okay, seeing none, um, we'll proceed with the agenda, and now we have matters dealing with council schedule, if any.
Uh, yes, thank you. Uh, just a brief reminder, uh, President Sims mentioned this, uh, tonight was the last meeting before the council's, uh, scheduled, uh, summer recess. Uh, you all, uh, have a scheduled work session July ninth, and then the first regular session after recess is scheduled for July twenty-first. And at that, uh, work session July ninth, that would be an opportunity to hear about items, uh, coming forward to the council, uh, in the first cycle, uh, after, after recess. I, uh, don't necessarily have a, a list of those items at the moment. Uh, we're still, uh, over a month away from that cycle, so, uh, the council, uh, may want to hold that date, uh, just in case there are, uh, items scheduled, and I'll, I'll note, uh, as a reminder, uh, the council has scheduled a public hearing on the annexation-related legislation for August the fourth. So, I know that's still a ways away, but, uh, I just wanted to remind you of that meeting as it starts at three PM, which is a little out of the ordinary. So, um, that's all I've got for tonight. Uh, thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Lucas. And before we go to adjournment, if I may just take just a second, um, going into council recess basically marks half of our legislative year for twenty-two-one. And I really want to not only thank my colleagues, um, for their deliberation, their goodwill, and their mutual respect for each other. I know it gets a bit contentious and, um, we see things differently. Um, but I do appreciate the work we've been able to do. I also want to thank our council staff, um, for all the hard work that they've done and the office of the clerk. Um, and last but not least, always, we want to thank our public for participating. Now, that is not the end of the year speech. That is not my intent. I just know we're going to take a little recess here. I want everyone to get plenty of rest and relaxation and get recharged because we got another half a year to go and a lot of business to take care of to do what's best for our city. So having said that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move we adjourn?
Second.
Been properly moved the second. Everyone, have a great night. Thank you for your time. Um, my phone will be on, even though I'll be off, I'll be gone next week on vacation. But my phone will be on. Call me if you need be, but rest, relax, and recharge. Have a great night.